Good evening, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We've got a lot of recognitions, a lot of good things to see. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harkin County Board of Education to order, and if everyone will please stand, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Mr. Bland, you have our board commitments?
Yes. To improve our effectiveness, the Harkin County Schools Board of Education commits to keep children first, to listen, to be prepared, to be professional, to demonstrate financial stewardship, to represent the entire district and support district goals, and to support board decisions.
Thank you. I think we may have a record crowd here tonight, so that must mean we have a lot of recognitions, Mr. Wright.
You are correct, Madam Chair, you are correct. So, you have a resolution in front of you for the HCS Better Together Award, and you also have a resolution in front of you for lots of student recognitions, which is a great thing. So, if you will pass those resolutions, Madam Chair, we'll bring those young folks in.
Move with after resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, first we're going to do the HCS Better Together Award. Is Samantha McNichol here? Samantha, are you here? Come on up, what are you doing sitting there? Let's give Samantha a hand, please. Samantha is receiving the HCS Better Together Award as a student. She's a John Harden High School junior, and she is extremely successful, excuse me, successful in all of her endeavors. She's a member of the John Harden tennis team. This young lady is very busy, I talked to her mom earlier in the week, extremely busy young lady. She recently performed Illegally Blonde and created several of the costumes for that performance, and altered others. She is a member of the John Harden High School academic team, and will participate in the Governor's Scholar Program this summer. She also owns and operates a small baking business, which she enjoys, and that's called Sweets by Sam. Thank you for what you're doing for this district, Samantha, appreciate you. Alright, Richard Rowland, I know Mr. Rowland's here, come on up, Mr. Rowland. All the way in the back, come on up. Let's give Mr. Rowland a hand, please. So, Mr. Rowland is a social studies teacher at James T. Alton Middle School. He also works tirelessly to spread the good news about James T. Alton, serving as the school's public relations coordinator. Mr. Rowland has forged relationships statewide, and that is true, to ensure students are competing at the highest levels. JTA Principal Danielle Cassidy says that Mr. Rowland is humble and works hard to advocate for others without seeking any personal accolades. He has coordinated several various events that highlight student accomplishments. He instills a spirit of service in students. Through project-based learning initiatives, he has empowered students to organize their own service projects, resulting in impactful contributions to the community. Whether it's the donation of 3,000 items to the Brown Cancer Center, which you all heard about earlier in the year, or the delivery of Christmas cards to local nursing homes, Mr. Rowland actively cultivates a sense of empathy and compassion among students. One of Mr. Rowland's most notable contributions is his work with the Peer Buddies Program, which pairs special needs students with other students for mentorship and friendship. By fostering inclusive relationships, Mr. Rowland ensures that every student feels valued and supported within the school community. Appreciate you, Richard, thank you. Mr. Rowland is certainly a workhorse. Ms. Carol George, come on up, Ms. Carol, I saw you. Carol, there she is. Let's give Ms. Carol a hand, please. Ms. Carol George is the Athletic Training Program Manager at Baptist Health-Harden. While Carol is an advocate and works to ensure that students are healthy on the field of competition, we are honoring her tonight because she is extremely dedicated to the Harkin County Schools Work Ethics Certification Program. The program consists of student applications for the certification, and culminates in students visiting with community leaders in a real interview. After the interview is complete, the interviewer gives the students extremely valuable feedback to use in the future. Carol has interviewed hundreds, maybe thousands, of students for work ethic certification. By my count, we've been doing this at least 14 to 15 years, and I don't think Carol George has missed a year of helping with that program. She has participated in the programs since day one. Her dedication, her loyalty, and input are truly appreciated, and we thank you. Thank you, Carol. Alright, we are now ready for the lots of, the many students, many students that are outside there. So, what we've asked them to do, we've placed them in groups, Madam Chair, we've placed them in groups, and they are going to come up, they're going to hand me their sign that was hanging on the wall where they were, and I'm going to tell you who they are, what group they are, and then they're going to introduce themselves, alright? Come on up, first group. Alright, young man, you're going to introduce yourself. He's a James T. Alton student, voter registration slogan contest state winner, Mr. Rowland, four years in a row that James T. Alton has had that's had a student pick the slogan for the state voter registration campaign. Go ahead and introduce yourself, congratulations.
Hi, my name is Ash Patel, and I won the JTA slogan competition.
Awesome, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And we're going to pause for each group for pictures. Parents are here to take his pictures, anybody here to? Alright, yes, take pictures galore, alright. Next up, these are students from East Harden Middle School Student Technology Leadership Program. They won first place at the 2024 Minds of Innovation Challenge. Go ahead, guys.
Grayden Bowles.
Bentley Banks.
Braxton Hornback.
So, hold on just a second, I'll introduce you. Alright, I'm going to introduce this young lady because I didn't make her a sign, so it's my fault. This is Lauren Forbus. She finished first in the sixth grade essay contest for the Kentucky Department of Agriculture, state champion right there. Thank you, Lauren, congratulations. Alright, who's next? Come on up. Alright, East Harden Middle School Archery. I'm going to let Tristan introduce himself and tell him why he's here.
Hi, I'm Tristan, I'm with East Harden Archery. I'm here because I got the All-American Archery Award, so that was for my academics and how I did it nationals.
Congratulations, Tristan. I mistakenly did not make a sign for this young lady too, and so I'm going to introduce her, I'm going to savor that. So, this is, go ahead, Gracie. This is Gracie Taylor. She earned second place in the state archery middle school girls division. Congratulations, Gracie. So, this young man represents James T. Alton Beta, and he is also participating in the Sandra Day, the Justice Sandra Day O'Connor Camp, which is a very prestigious camp, and he's participating in it. Go ahead and introduce yourself, Liam.
My name's Liam Lentz, and yeah, I'm going to the Sandra Day O'Connor Camp, and I'm the only one here for Beta, so.
Thanks, Liam. Liam and his, Liam and his class base from Beta did very well at Beta Convention. Alright, come on up. You're the only one from your group. Alright, Heartland Student, okay, sorry. Heartland STLP, introduce yourself, buddy.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I am Cameron Dye, and I got second place for Tech Bowl for Kentucky STLP.
Awesome, congratulations. Okay, the party showed up with Heartland Elementary School Beta. Come on up and introduce yourselves, guys. Just say your name into the microphone.
Hi, I'm Levi Noice.
Jace Colser.
Grayson Wallace.
Cindy McCollum.
Sheridan Steele.
Regina De La Ral.
Archer England.
Tucker French.
Huntington Vincent.
Julia Losovitz.
Hello again, I'm Cameron Dye.
If I smile for pictures, guys. Awesome. Thanks, guys. Alright, these young ladies are with Lakewood Elementary School Beta Convention. Come on up, guys.
Hi, my name's Lily Kakum. I was at the All-State Choir, and I won first place to On-Side Drawing Beta.
I'm Anna Bell Yarley.
Say it again.
I'm Anna Bell Yarley.
You certainly are.
Hi, I'm Leah Rainey.
Alright, thank you, guys. These are students who finished first, second, or third in competition from Lincoln Trail Elementary at Beta. Go on ahead, guys.
Rosalie Lockwood.
Callie Jo Scott.
Alyssa Brackett.
Alright, congratulations, guys. These young men finished state champion in the Bluegrass Middle School You Be the Chemist state champions. Go ahead, guys.
Hi, I'm Hunter Baker, and I'm a member of the team that finished first place in the state for You Be the Chemist.
Hello, I'm Esha Simon.
I'm Emmett England.
Congratulations Bulldogs, thank you. Come on up, guys. These are John Harden High School students. They finished second in their competition at the Kentucky High School Athletic Association Esports Championships. Introduce yourselves.
Hello, I'm Kyle McCormick. We competed in the state tournament for Splatoon Esports.
I'm Chris Cannon.
I'm Nathan Dorr.
And I'm Chase Field.
Alright, this young lady finished second from North Harden High School at the State FCC LA Championships. Introduce yourself.
My name is Amelia Rose. I'm from North Harden High School, FCC LA, and I finished second in the public policy advocate, as he just said.
Good job. Alright, congratulations. Hold on just a second. Alright, thank you. Alright, come on up. These are, these are students from the famous, world-renowned East Harden High, or East Harden Middle School Beta Chapter. They have done very well for so many years at state competition. Will let them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Kendall Crew.
I'm Jordan Ammons.
Kate Nessbommer.
Peyton Noice.
Payson Kugel.
I'm Red Edlin.
Jude Tobler.
Lauren Forbus.
Gracie Taylor.
Ashanti Gibbs.
Ava Hilger.
Lilia Kimberlane.
Lucas Castor.
Reagan Castor.
Lily Nix.
Jaylee Lyons.
Connor Brown.
Evan McNeil.
Santi McNeil.
Hannah Wagner.
Brooklyn Reynolds.
Faith Coin.
Erin Westerfield.
Amy Langford.
I'm Molly Hazel Sponsor.
Madam Chair, a lot of these Bruins finished first, or second, or third in individual competition, but for group talent, they are state champions, and in song fest, they finished second place. And some of these students also did well this past weekend at Middle School Choir, is that right? Was that two weekends ago? Last weekend, yeah. Finished, earning a championship in their Middle School Choir competition. So, all of those students are in this group, very busy students. Alright, these young men and women, John Harden High School, did very well at Beta Conference, let's give them a hand, please.
My name is Reed Bischoff.
My name is Chase Field.
Anya Carson.
Isabella Hutchinson.
Jada Gray.
Leanne Canoth.
Congratulations, guys. This young lady finished second in her competition at the DECA Conference. She's also from John Harden High School.
Josie Here.
Alright, Madam Chair, I think my job is done. I love this, we recognize so many students in May. It's a great way to wrap up the school year.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
This is why we do what we do.
Alright, I am Mr. Sutton, and we're here to recognize a lot of students tonight as well. It's our end of the year for instructional services, and it's a culminating of a long year and a great year for many accomplishments that we want to recognize tonight. So, our first group is our Elite Eight Readers. So, if you're receiving a reading award tonight for Accelerated Reader or Reading Council, if you can come on up and just line up right here behind me, and then we'll get your names and get some pictures of you and everything. So, come on down and line up here behind myself and Dr. Jury. So, if you all remember January, we started by bringing our top reader from every school. At that point in time, the competition's on. Now, now it's the Elite Eight across the district. So, we want to recognize these students. When you guys get your name called, if you can get your award, come on out and tell the name of your favorite book or the book you're currently reading. If you can think about that for a second, what you're reading. So, come on down first, eighth in the entire district with 340 points from Vine Grove Elementary School, Caitlin Hodge. Tell them your favorite book.
I don't know my favorite book.
She don't have a favorite book? There you go. Seventh place overall in the district from G.C. Burkhead, we have Olivia Cunningham.
My favorite book is the Warrior Cats books.
Love it. In sixth place overall, 458 points, also from G.C. Burkhead, Caleb Bauer.
The Lightning Thief.
Lightning Thief, that's a good one. In fifth place overall, with 604 points from New Highland Elementary School, we have Henry Guandike.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I don't have anything prepared, so I'm just going to say, my favorite book is The Wind in the Willows by Kenneth Cram. Thank you, and have a good night.
In fourth place with 623 points from Vine Grove, Devajah Holmes.
Hi, my name is Devajah Holmes, and my favorite book was probably the Wild Robot series.
Like it. Now for the top three with 649 points from Vine Grove Elementary School, Devarian Smith.
Hello, my name is Devarian Smith, and I don't have a favorite book.
He's just a reader. Second overall in the district, 911 points from Cecilia Valley, J.D. Finch.
My favorite book is The Giver.
And number one overall, it was 948 points when they cut off the competition, but the librarian actually emailed me today and said this student went over 1,000 points for the year. So, let's give it up, number one in the district from Lakewood Elementary School, Ethan McDaniel.
I do not have a favorite book, but the book that I'm reading right now is Keepers of the Lost Cities Legacy, flashback, sorry.
Now, if you, hold on a second there, Mr. Lovins. If you are a teacher, a librarian, or a principal encouraging these students to read, please stand at this time so you can be recognized as well. Librarians, teachers, principals from these schools. Thank you. Alright, next up, something we do in instruction each year is our Financial Literacy Program. All, pretty much 1,000 of our fifth grade students take part in the Ever Five Program. They complete a financial literacy component. And then Bound, we partner with them to get out into our schools, do activities with our students and with our teachers, and they would like to start recognizing some of our teachers that are going above and beyond with our financial literacy initiative. So, I'm going to call Jake Durabos up here to recognize some of our teachers here across the district.
Good evening, everybody. First, congratulations to all the students. That was some incredible achievements. At a Bound Credit Union, we are extremely passionate about financial literacy and helping our communities be smarter financial consumers, and we know that starts all the way in elementary school, up through high school. So, last year, we connected with about 20,000 individuals in our communities to provide financial literacy, but we cannot do it without school systems and amazing teachers. So, we wanted to recognize three really, really standout teachers who help us deliver what we do in financial literacy in the schools. So, I'm going to call three up, if you guys want to come up, and then we'll do a group picture altogether. First teacher from G.C. Burkhead Elementary, Kim Mouser. Our second teacher from Wes Harden Middle School, Joy Knight. And our third from Central Harden High School, Dana Taylor Garrett. We cannot thank these educators enough for partnering with us, inviting us into the classroom, and just for the dedication to the students and the community. Thank you all for everything you guys do.
This is a time each year that we could also recognize our Governor's Scholar students, our Governor's Scholar for the Arts, our Governor's Scholar for Entrepreneurship. These students are going to get a, come up here tonight, be recognized, talk about why they're excited about going to GSP, one of those programs, maybe about what colleges they're going to attend, and what they plan on majoring in. So, we're very excited about the, just recognize them tonight for this tremendous accomplishment representing Harkin County Schools at the Governor's Scholar Programs this summer. So, I'm going to have Dr. Jury come on up and to recognize these students.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. We did have 26 students from Harkin County who are recognized for the Governor's Scholars Program, Governor's Scholar for the Arts, and Governor's Scholar for Entrepreneurs. So, very excited to recognize them tonight. As I call you up here, if you would, again, tell what school that you currently attend, what college you plan to attend, and what you plan to major in, if you will, please. So, we'll start with our Governor's Scholar Program. So, Lindy Barnes. Presley Decker. Hi, my name is Presley Decker. I go to Central Harden High School. I don't know what college I plan to attend yet, but I am planning to major in elementary education. Emerson McNeely.
Hi, I'm Emerson McNeely. I go to Central. I plan to go to U of L the Speed School and major in environmental engineering.
Claire Nessbommer.
I'm Claire Nessbommer. I plan to go to George Mason, and I would like to major in biology or ecology.
Ava Stith.
Hello, I'm Ava Stith. I go to Central Harden High School. I plan to go to the University of Kentucky, and I plan to major in pharmacy. Thank you.
Mia Tabor.
Hi, I'm Mia Tabor. I go to Central Harden. I plan to go to Center, and I don't know what I'm going to major in yet.
Noah Bennett. And I will tell you that Noah was recognized for GSP and GSE.
I'm Noah Bennett. I go to Central Harden High School, and I plan to attend Western Kentucky University and get a degree in construction management.
Braxton Loffler.
Hello, I go to Central Harden, and I want to go to Vanderbilt, but plan on going to DBKU and major in high school education.
Preston Meredith.
I am Preston Meredith. I go to Central Harden High School. I do not know my college or my major.
Jacob Turlington.
Hi, my name is Jacob Turlington. I go to Central Harden High School. I plan to attend the United States Military Academy, and I have no clue what I'm majoring in.
Samantha McNichol.
My name is Samantha McNichol. I attend John Harden High School. I hope to go to Vassar College to major in mathematics.
Reese Thompson.
My name is Reese Thompson, and I go to North Harden High School, and I'll probably end up going to WKU, and I don't really know what I'm gonna major in either.
Unisa Locolajo is an alternate for GSP.
My name is Unis. I go to John Harden High School, and I'm still deciding what college I want to go to, but I want to major in political science.
For GSE, Evelyn Barner.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Barner. I'm representing Central Harden. I'd like to go to Campbellsville University and ECTC, and I'd like to major in art education.
Harper Taylor.
Hi, I'm Harper Taylor. I don't know what college I plan to attend, but I plan to major in the performing arts.
For GSE, Elena McNeil.
Hi, I'm Elena McNeil. I go to Central Harden. I don't know what college I'm going to, but I am going to double major in fashion merchandising and interior design.
I'd also quickly like to recognize those who weren't able to join us tonight, but still recognize them. Lindy Barnes, Adeline Johnson, Juliana Stith, Cade Bedstibner, Andrew Diselkamp, Jared Fairbank, Samuel Nelson, and Gabriella Palamo were all accepted into Governor Scholars Program.
So today, you got a chance to hear about the 18 Grow Your Own students that we added and signed with their college yesterday. We always take that a step forward, and we try to give them an opportunity to take the Praxis test, a test you have to pass in your content area to become a teacher. And we had six students, maybe seven here, that passed the Praxis in various content areas. So I'm very proud of these students, and most of them are part of the Grow Your Owns, so they're gonna be back here teaching for us one of these days. And we want to recognize those students tonight with a HCS shirt and let them tell about what they're majoring in when they get to college. So if they want to come on up, the Praxis students, if you're here for passing the Praxis, come on down. I won't say your content area for you. I want you to say it up front. Everybody be impressed here. James Pence, come on down. James here? All right, give it up for James. This is a big deal.
I will be a high school biology teacher.
Yes, sir. Passed the Praxis in biology, high school. Next up, Brianna Blankenship.
I went to major in biology education.
All right, there's two science teachers for Harden County Schools. Let's keep it up. Reagan Rafe Snyder.
I'd like to major in accounting.
All right, got a future business teacher. She passed the business Praxis. Love it. Reese Thompson, come on down. She says she's undecided, but I'm gonna keep talking to being that math teacher. Just listen when she passed her.
So I'm, again, Reese Thompson. I tested- I passed the middle school math, and that is my backup plan.
I think you have to have like a 151 to pass. She made a 171, so it's a good backup plan. I think she's pretty safe. Yeah, yeah. Isabel Moore.
I'm Isabel Moore, and I'm majoring in elementary education.
All right. Haley Sanford.
I'm Haley Sanford, and I also plan on majoring in elementary education.
And Olivia Newton.
I'm majoring in elementary education.
I'm gonna call up Ariana Wilson. I apologize that I did not have her shirt for her here tonight, but I will get that to her. Ariana, come on, tell us the school you're from and which Praxis you passed.
I'm from John Harden High School, and I plan on majoring for special education.
Love it. Thank you all so much. So proud. You're seeing the future of Harden County Schools right there in that line. All right, finally, I appreciate y'all being patient. We have so many great students. Give the chance to recognize tonight. So we're gonna do our Focus on Academics with our Educators Rising program. Let them share some experience. I'm gonna turn over to Dr. Drew to get that present- presentation for you all.
So our Educators Rising is a CTSO that is involved with our education, teaching and learning pathway. And so our students are involved in this current technical student organization. And so they went to- I'm Louisville, to the Kentucky Exposition Center, excuse me, on March the 6th, and we had 53 different schools there and 33 Kentucky school districts, and they had 27 different events that they could participate in. And so we had some students who did very well when they were there. So I'm gonna have them come up and explain to you what events that they participated in. First, we're gonna have Presley Decker, and I don't think Samantha Kip was able to be here with us, but she- they placed seventh in children's lit. And you can see behind you what they- what they did. So I'm gonna have them tell you a little bit more about that.
Hi, guys. My name is Presley Decker. As you can see, I am the author of our children's book entitled The Worm Who Wished to Fly. Writing a book was not as easy as I anticipated because I'm a writer, but I didn't know how to get my thoughts out in anything other than poetry form. So Mr. Ernst, I have to thank a lot for helping me through that, as well as Samantha. She is an incredible artist, which I wish she could be here with me tonight because she deserves all the recognition for it because her art is amazing, and she's also really good at the coloring and all things like that. Competition was really fun. It was very stressful, but we did get through it, and we managed to place. So we get to go to DC in the summer. I unfortunately will not be there, but she'll be able to present for me, and I'm very excited for that. So, yeah.
Also, from representing EC3, we had James Pence and Grace Knight, and they placed first place in Ethical Dilemma.
So we placed first in Ethical Dilemma, obviously. The process for creating this was a little bit interesting, and I'll let Grace talk to you about that, but I want to give a bit overview of the situation we were given. So we were given the situation to Sven. Sven is a student teacher in a middle school that he one day hopes to teach at. So when you're a student teacher, you're at the very end of your pathway, which is mildly important for this. Sven was under Ms. Norton, who was using outdated teaching methods and contacting students recreationally outside of school, which is an issue for a multitude of reasons that we don't have time to get into. Sorry. Am I missing anything?
When we were trying to come up with what our standpoint was on this, we really talked a lot with each other and our opinions on it, but I think what really helped us was talking with like the teachers and professors that we trusted, who were able to give us some real good insight into what they think should be done in this type of situation. That's all. Thank you.
Real quickly, and I know we've already lost a lot of people, but you all are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. It gets a little more boring at this point in time, so a lot of people choose to leave. We'd love to have you stay, but I just wanted to give you the opportunity to exit if you so chose. That's the best introduction I've gotten all day. Thank you. I should have waited till after you, and then it gets boring. I'll tap dance up here for a little bit. Good day, and thank you for allowing me to provide an update on the Harden County Schools Performing Arts Center. As we navigate beyond the pandemic setbacks, the PAC is gradually returning to the familiar rhythms of triumphs and challenges. But before we talk about these things, I want to give you a brief reminder of the PAC's mission. The PAC is here to cultivate creative thought and problem-solving, enhance the local economy, promote local artists and artist groups, and foster responsibility, sociability, and confidence. This season, the PAC served over 53,000 individuals, a 7.9% increase over last year. Among them were more than 23,000 students, predominantly from Harden County Schools. Furthermore, nearly 28,000 members of the public actively participated in or attended events, drawing attendees from across central Kentucky, southern Indiana, and even internationally via our live streaming capabilities. This season, the PAC curated a series of high-quality events as part of our in-house season, offered our facilities for lease to local artists and organizations, and provided space to Harden County School organizations at no cost. Despite a slight decrease in performances this year, we still hosted over 260 activities encompassing auditions, rehearsals, workshops, and performances. This season, the PAC has been in use nearly 13% more hours and over 13% fewer days than last year, resulting in a dramatic 67% decrease in overtime. These results are indicative of our improved record-keeping efforts, the hiring of custodian halfway through the school year, and better implementation of the PAC's conditions of use for all user groups. This season, the PAC has seen donations decrease, but we are working to secure producing partners to offset this difference and are optimistic about closing the funding gap in the last coming months of the fiscal year. This season, the PAC has seen rental revenue surge by 39.6%, contrasting with a 4.1% decline in interest in the PAC's season events. Despite expenses showing a rise, that increase is less pronounced than the previous year. These figures suggest several factors, including, again, our enhanced record-keeping practices, a growing pool of less risk-averse potential renters than schools, some season offerings falling below audience expectations, and a reflection of the broader trend in rising local expenses, especially when it comes to construction materials. Based on our Arts for All Teacher reviews this season, out of 47 teacher submissions, 97.7% felt at least adequately prepared for their visit to the PAC, marking a 1 and 1/4 point improvement from the previous year, while over 80% of teachers reported that their visits significantly enhanced their in-class instruction, indicating a notable 5.85 point increase from last year's feedback. One of our concerns is that the Arts for All funding submission of teacher evaluations are still low. They have not backed up to their norms after the pandemic. This is a source of revenue for the teachers. They get $100 per review turned in, up to $500 to cover transportation costs at each school. But with only 47 reviews being turned in, we have a lot of room for growth there. Feedback from our audience surveys this season reaffirms our commitment to excellence, with event quality remaining consistently high at 97.8%, while service quality has seen a slight dip, down .3 points compared to last year's stellar 99% approval rate. Can't win them all. Introduced last season, our ongoing post-production report initiative encouraging user groups to provide feedback, it still also has room for improvement. With 24 responses received, a modest increase from last year's 19, and 100% approval rate, these initial results are promising. However, as user groups become more accustomed to providing honest feedback after their events, we anticipate this rating may fluctuate in the future. Feedback is crucial for identifying areas where our services can be enhanced. Successes this season include the hiring of Kathy Ziegler and Brandon Steersman in January. With these two latest additions to our team, the PAC is now fully staffed for the first time since the pandemic. Another success worth mentioning is our PAC Volunteer of the Year, Ron Missoni. Ron, are you still here? Give a wave over there, sir. Despite several health setbacks this year, Ron remains active in his church, is a frequent substitute teacher, and a dedicated volunteer ushering for shows here often at the PAC. Ron is just one of 40 volunteers who have dedicated over 1,500 hours of their time and talents to the PAC this past year. Another notable success this season is the implementation of the PAC's living calendar. Inspired by John Harden's living calendar, our version has swiftly become a sought-after resource for teachers and renters. It enables potential user groups to identify optimal times for utilizing the PAC's facilities while allowing existing user groups to plan their annual events more effectively, leveraging insights from past usage patterns. A further achievement this season is the adaptation of Signwell as our digital contract management system for all independent contractors and rental agreements. PAC volunteer and project management consultant Dieter Schuckley has played a pivotal role in streamlining our contract processes by digitizing much of the work through Signwell. In the coming months, we aim to transition from Signwell to the more cost-effective and versatile Adobe software programs while working with Ms. Schuckley to further enhance our scheduling and marketing processes. One last notable triumph this season was the launch of our Page2Stage collaboration with Kentucky Shakespeare. Beginning with an audition workshop last summer, followed by a four-month-long playwriting workshop catering to students and adults, we're excited to expand upon these initiatives next year with a series of directing workshops leading to a new play festival next spring. Our 2024-25 season lineup hits the stage in September with Mary Poppins, based on the Disney film, the rebroadcast of our radio drama It's a Wonderful Life on Qixi and HCECTV, The Nutcracker again in December, while we introduce our audiences to a new comedy, The Play That Goes Wrong, where everything you think will does, and literally falls down around their ears. It's a great follow-up to Clue from last year, which was a surprise hit for us. I describe it as Clue meets Monty Python. It should be a lot of fun. Going in a different direction, Kentucky Shakespeare will be back next spring with Macbeth. And then Missoula Children's Theater rounds out our season with Hercules, a brand-new Missoula Children's Theater production that will be presented here for the first time. And again, as I mentioned, our Page2Stage workshops, audition information is available on all of these opportunities, including signing up for those future workshops, and tickets will be available in the early fall. As we go into the next year, we have these objectives left over to finish for the 2024-25 season. Completing a lighting system upgrade, which I believe you got some information on at your last board meeting. Initiating a plan to replace all the curtains that you see here on stage due to damage, wear and tear, and the curtains are flame-retardant, but that retardant particles start to flake off over time, and they become less flame-retardant. And that's something we need to take care of in the near future. We are recruiting Harden County School user groups to better utilize the facilities to try to bounce those numbers up, and encouraging user groups to consider using ticket sales for their events as a fundraising tool. Continued staff training goes on to bring our new hires up to speed, and we are accelerating our succession plans for the outgoing PAC director. Restructuring and rebranding of our educational programs under the banner of PAC activities will more effectively convey the breadth of offerings available to Harden County families, not only from us, but also from other arts organizations in the area. Marketing Arts for All more effectively as a viable funding resource for Harden County School field trip plans is underway, and we want to build upon the success of last year's workshop partnerships with Kentucky Shakespeare. And finally, we'll be investigating better scheduling options to work around spring testing window, as we found some difficulties this year that we need to address. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Guber Productions, which Nazara Morgan here, and Kendon Matthews through the EC3 media arts program have their own company. They create websites, Instagram, and social media. Did I get it all? Did I get it all? And thank you guys for your help and for being here today, Morgan. And while there is still much to achieve, our current success is primarily attributed to the collaborative effort of our PAC staff, the remarkable individuals who utilize our facility, the talented performers who grace our stage, and the generosity of our donors and volunteers. We also extend our heartfelt appreciation to the Harden County Board of Education for your steadfast support, ensuring that the PAC remains a beacon of high-quality performing arts in our community. Thank you for your unwavering commitment.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up is recognition of visitors. We did not have anyone sign up for that. Our construction updates, we heard from JRA and both of our construction managers for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Central Harden. Everything remains fairly well on track. May not completely get things done by the start of school year, but we're moving in that direction, getting as much done as we can. I believe they have gotten or will get the parking lot at Central cleared up, so graduation can move a little bit smoother. And just looking to process into that from Phase 1, moving over into Phase 2, a little bit there that will start getting going this summer. If anybody goes by there, you can definitely start to see what the finished product, at least from the outside, is going to look like. Consideration of the consent agenda. Student Services, we're approving the changes for the 24-25 Student Code of Conduct, approval of Central Harden FBLA to travel to Orlando, Florida, approval of East Harden Middle School 8th Grade to travel to Washington, DC, and received information about the reconfiguration of the 4U frisk at JT Alton Middle and Byng Grove Elementary. Under Financial Services, we received the monthly financial reports and approval of the orders of the treasurer, received the school activity fund balance and PPA report, approval of the bond of depository pledged by JP Morgan Chase at 103% of the daily balances in each account, approval of fidelity bonds of treasurer for Chief Operations Officer John Smith and Finance Director Jessica Anis, approval of the 24-25 tentative budget. We go through several budgets, but we're getting close to the end. Along with that, we're very happy and excited to approve a 6% cost-of-living adjustment for our certified-degreed employees and a $1 to $4 an hour raise for hourly classified employees for the fiscal year '25. We're very pleased. That's, I can say from my time on the board for certain, that's the most we've been able to do, so well-deserved for all our staff. Approval to declare transportation item surplus for sealed bid auction, approval of change orders for Central Harden Phase 1, approval of an anonymous $10,000 donation to the Meadowview Elementary Family Resource Center. It's wonderful. Approval of the continuation of the Summer Child Nutrition Program with feeding sites at John Harden, North Harden, and GC Burkhead, and the Cruisin' Cafe from June 3rd to July 26, with lunch being served from 11 to 1:00. Approval of all Harden County schools to participate in the Community Eligibility Provision Program for the 24-25 school year, making breakfast and lunch provided to students at no cost, and adult breakfast price being $3.25 and adult lunch price being $4.75. Approval of the Child Nutrition Small Equipment Bid, approval of the Child Nutrition Paper Supply Bid, approval of the Purchase Agreement for the Resor Property, approval of Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract and the corresponding BG1 with Train, approval of the new Highland Elementary Roof Repair, and approval of the District-Wide Copier Contract with the exception of the Print Shop. Human Resources, we have our Certified and Classified Personnel Actions. We receive non-renewals for the 24-25 year. Approval of modification of contracted days for the Child Care Assistant Supervisor Position for the Early Learning Academy. Approval of the creation of the Director of District Data and System Efficiency Position. Approval of the recommended changes to position salaries and the salary schedule for the 24-25 school year. And then we received SBDM minutes, PAC minutes, and approval of the board minutes. One of the longer consent agendas we've had in a while. Is there anything that anybody would like to address more specifically, pull out, anything of that nature?
Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt or approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Under... Oh. Mr. Sutherland, can we get your assistance, please? Yeah, if you want to come on up. So we're moving on to action items, which is consideration and possible approval of the resolution authorizing and approving the execution of a lease agreement with the Harden County School District Finance Corporation and any further necessary instruments, approving certain architects' plans for the construction of certain school-building projects, constituting the energy conservation measures at various facilities, and approving the plan of financing the cost of said projects.
Alarm has sounded. It's time. Good evening. I must say, those kids are always so impressive, so heads off to your district. There's a lot of bright kids from here.
Absolutely.
Happy to answer any questions you all may have about this. One different thing about this project than prior projects is you're going to be repaying this debt from the general fund, not your restricted funds. And as you all know, when the taxpayers pay taxes to the school board, a certain portion of your taxes gets put in restricted funds that can only be used for building facilities, bonding capacity, if you will. This project, because it's a utility project, it's going to produce utility savings. The General Assembly created statutes several decades ago that allows you to issue general obligation bonds as repayment for the debt incurred to put in the improvements in the school district. So just a little different than your typical transaction. I thought I'd highlight that. High-level interest rates are, I think, good. We sold bonds today for Murray State that interest rates were below 4%. It's about the same credit as your offering will be, so you should enjoy, all things being equal, relatively similar interest rates. We're scheduled for May 23rd at 10:30 Eastern, and I can stop right there. We have a close June 18th, June 13th, sorry. So, anyway, happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? All right. So I think we need motions to...
I'll make a motion to recess the regular meeting of the Harden County Board of Education for a special-called meeting of the Harden County School District Finance Corporation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So now I will call to order the Harden County School District Finance Corporation Special And we're considering the resolution. Does somebody want to read that?
You need a motion?
I believe we do.
Madam Chair, on behalf of the Harden County School District Finance Corporation, I move that we approve a resolution relating to and providing for the issuance of $14,885,000 principal amount, subject to a permitted increase of up to $1,490,000 or a decrease in an amount determined by the corporation to be in the best interest of the corporation of special obligation bonds, energy conservation revenue bonds, in accordance with the Kentucky Revised Statute Sections 58.010 through 58.140, 58.60 through 58.615, 45.8345 through 45.8460, 65.940 through 65.956, 160.160 subsection 5, and 162.120 through 162.300. Collectively, the act to provide funds for energy conservation measures, providing and determining the duty of said corporation in connection with the operation of the school properties, and the creation of funds sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on said revenue bonds as and when they mature, the creation of adequate maintenance and insurance funds authorizing the execution of a lease of such foregoing properties to the Board of Education of Harden County, Kentucky.
Second.
You got the easy part, Ben.
Felt like I was back in my old job there for a minute.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think Ben has spent quite a bit of time dealing with this issue.
Yes, he has.
I like the thinking for his time.
Absolutely, because he's been great in guiding us through all of this, explaining the benefits of it and why it's a wise thing to do this.
Absolutely, being able to take advantage of federal funds that are out there. So I agree. Thank you, Ben. All right. Without any further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn the meeting of the Harden County School District Finance Corporation.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we get everything you needed to...
No, that's perfect. And I'm glad I didn't have to read the paragraph. You did a great job. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
See you next week.
All right. I don't believe we have any new business. And superintendent's report.
Excellent. I just want to thank our folks who worked on the salary increase for our teachers. Ms. Anis and Ms. Austin spent a considerable amount of time making sure we had the revenue to support those bonds, and appreciate the board showing their support with the raises to all staff within Harden County, and also to our legislators who supported the increase in SEEK funding. We had a 3% overall increase in SEEK funding, but Harden County Board also contributed a large amount to be able to do that raise for our staff, so we greatly appreciate that. Also, for Teacher Appreciation Week, we had our schools to have many donations from local churches, local banks, businesses, really showing their support to all who support education and the teachers in the classroom. So just a huge shout-out to those individuals. To our families who may be watching, Ms. Polly creates a newsletter each year letting you know of camps and activities that are available throughout the summer in Harden County schools. There is absolutely no reason for your children to be home during the summer. If you will look at all the opportunities, all the camps that are available, and this can be found on our website as well, in case your child didn't make it home with that newsletter, we do have the list. And again, with our local community college, there are a variety of activities for our students to participate in. Ms. Johnson mentioned the free lunch program. We have the Cruisin' Cafe, and so there are locations. You can find those on our website of where that's going to be, but also the schools that will be serving lunch will also be found on our website. So again, that is free for students 18 years old and younger, and you do not have to be enrolled in Harden County schools. You can still come to that free lunch program. And I see Ms. Cruz here, and just want to let her know the board discussed making sure we move forward with the BG1 for the new construction on the child nutrition building. We had already passed that, and we're going to make sure that gets put into motion. So again, a huge shout-out to all of our staff for an incredible school year. You saw a culmination of our students here, but great things happen every day. We just happened to have this evening to recognize a multitude of students. So thanks to Mr. Sutton and Dr. Jury for their presentations tonight in showing all the success that we're having in the district, and to Mr. Wright for getting all of our other students here to be recognized. And again, just proud to be a part of this district because of the great things happening. We always put students first, and tonight is a great example of that. So thank you all for your support to make that happen. That's it.
All right. We do not need an executive session. Took care of that at lunch. The board calendar, May 18th, 9:00 AM, College View, Harden County High Graduation is by appointment. That is at College View. May 21st, school is dismissed for Election Day. May 24th, last day for students. That night, 7:00 PM, John Harden High School will have their graduation. May 25th at 11:00 AM, Central Harden will have their graduation, and May 25th at 6:00 PM, North Harden will have their graduation. May 27th is Memorial Day. Office is closed. Our next board meeting is June 27th at 6:00 PM. That will be a special meeting that's a different date than what was originally on the board calendar, and that will be at Central Office. So thank everyone for coming out, and I will echo that it is always wonderful to see all the great things going on in our district. We know that there's tons and tons and even more students doing things than what we saw tonight, but it's great to be able to celebrate that. So with that...
Madam Chair, I move that we close the meeting.
A second.
Adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.